First, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communications, we're going to start with 3A, the Jackson County Middle School construction update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, last time we were here, everything's kind of falling apart since then. I'll just take it like it is. So, everything was on track, everything was expected to be started up, and we were getting ready to install the floor, the contractor was getting ready to install the floor. And the issue became that the HVAC would not turn on if the floor could not be installed without the HVAC being on. As we continue to work through that with the engineer, he continued to give us solution after solution, and none of them really satisfied the problem. So, we got to the point that we were looking at bringing in a third-party engineer to have them tell us what was wrong with the system. It was apparent that it was not anything that was a simple fix. Right, I mean, the day before we pulled the trigger on doing that, the engineer of record came back to us and indicated that he reran all of his calculations, that he drastically undersized the pumps for the HVAC system. Not only did he acknowledge his mistake, late though it was, he is paying for all the costs of correcting all of that equipment. So, there were leak times. Fortunately, we were able to get those exceptionally fast for what they were. But what was spec for the project was about a seven-and-a-half horse pump for the chiller system. And what ended up being delivered after all this was a 15-horse, two 15-horse pumps for the chiller. The pumps are in, they have been installed. The Green Mechanical is the contractor. Green Mechanical is doing everything that they possibly can to make sure that those pumps, well, they have done it event for this point. And there's two parts of that. There's pump and a VFD, available frequency drive, that runs that pump. Those pumps have two options. They can either be run by VFD, or they can be run as a direct drive. The VFDs are supposed to be here tomorrow. Well, I was talking with them today and the engineer, and we've got the okay to, they're going to wait till, let's say, 10 o'clock, see whether the VFDs come in or not. If they do not come in, they will be wiring and hooking those pumps up as a direct drive to have the air on tomorrow. That is going to happen. Everything else has been done. They've been working shifts to get the pumps wired, hooked up, and everything. They tore it apart as soon as they found out the new pumps were coming in and tore it apart. And they worked all weekend to get the new pumps in. And as soon as the VFDs come in, they'll be installed too. Train, who is the equipment manufacturer, and they do the conditioning and startup of all the equipment. Train is going to be working basically double the trucking shifts in order to get it. So, there's a couple of different layers to that. So, you get the building started up with those pumps, and it starts running chill water and everything. Doesn't mean that everything's going to be running perfectly. They got to go to each air conditioning unit and make sure that was running right and balanced right, so on and so forth. They're going to be working multiple shifts to make sure the vacuum's down as soon as the building gets turned on tomorrow. Train has reassured us that they're going to pull all the resources that they possibly can in order to do that. With HVAC being what it is, that brings us to the floors. So, there was cooling in the administrative area. The administrative area has got the flooring installed. The next is the library. They are going to be starting the installation of flooring on the library Wednesday. They reassure us they can have that done by Thursday. All the other floors are VCT. Those two areas, the administrative and the library, are LVT. LVT is much, much, much more forgetting than VCT is. You do have to have fully conditioned spaces in order to lay the VCT. We've been talking with the flooring guys, and again, all of the costs of all of this are rolled into the costs being incurred by the engineer. So, none of this is on the school board. But the flooring guys are going to be working, as soon as the air is on and conditioned throughout, they're going to be working nights and weekends to get all the flooring and finalize. VCT areas consist of two science rooms, a hallway, the cafeteria, and the cafeteria addition. So, those will all get installed on the nights and the weekends. Generally speaking, so, more broadly speaking anyway, the, I walked aside for this, and I was on the phone the whole time. David has been in touch with Barbara. They are going to be having all of the workforce that they can get from the prison to come help clean and move everything that needs to be cleaned and moved. I told David that he needs to get with the principal, and the principal is going to direct him what piece of furniture goes where. And David is going to direct the inmates, and they are going to put everything back where it goes as far as the administrative area that can be set right now. Thursday, same thing with the library. Everything that can possibly be moved, the whole library. When they moved the library out, they moved it out in two days, or a day and a half. I feel like they can put it back in a day and a half. I don't know if that would be exceptionally orderly, but they're going to put it back in a day and a half and then work towards getting the library put back together fully. As far as classrooms go, that HVAC, all the work was really in those classrooms. It was new HVAC equipment in the senior class, and I know the air's not on in those areas right now. But as of right now, any classrooms are able to be, they can be moved in and start getting their space ready in classroom areas. And then as of tomorrow, the air will be on. So, there will be hot spots and cool spots in the building, but they will have air flowing throughout the entire building tomorrow. And then in addition to that, we've got, I've talked to one of the other contractors, they've got seven or eight guys coming in who are just, that's what they're going to be cleaning and getting stuff out. I've told all the contractors today, if it does not permanently live inside of that building and is not installed by, they're coming Wednesday, if it is not permanently installed and living in that building, then it is going to be taken out of the building. It's gone. So, the cleaning crews are coming to make sure that everything is taken out. Alan Company will be here Friday and Saturday to pave the board lot, complete that. The FMD classrooms, doors, there's a couple of doors that were just on hold or delayed getting, but they're supposed, they're coming this week. They will be installed this week. All the new FMD rooms have been finished. The kitchen is put together, is done, ready. And then also, as far as planning goes, they'll be getting everything, all the flooring protection and everything out of GM. And I believe, believe that there's some touch of paint that they weren't on, but there's a door ring that may have been damaged. That's easy enough without being done this week, though I'd rather have that.
I just came from the middle school department here, and there is no way the FMD students could be in that room.
Okay, I may have misheard on that. I walked to the school earlier, and I, maybe I know I was deferring to David on some of this, but he told me that it was already. I thought I walked through its face, but I may be mistaken. Yes, ma'am?
It's actually a safety issue. There was a lot going on in that school.
Yes, ma'am?
This is directly where the area is, and there's a little top there.
Okay, I will talk to David. I just, I called. Yes, ma'am. I called to verify specifically about, that's made your head over there, because it's not done, but I, okay.
And honestly, from the time I left, it was about 3:30 first thing until I walked up here at 2:00 after 8:00. Outside of what the teachers have done, I've not seen any progress.
Okay.
I went through every single room. Now, the GM, all I did was just stand there and wait.
Yeah.
Because everything in the locker is in there. But I'm really concerned.
I understand.
Speaking of the classrooms that have no way through, I think we're going to be moving and stepping in and out, which I think that they did put tarp and stuff down for this, that, and all everything. But if you want to look at that entrance, it really stepped up forward.
Okay.
So, that will lead it, because we just.
No, that was just done. That one didn't need to be fixed. Absolutely. Yes.
And there's plug-ins that don't work, and outside it's 26 degrees in the building, which is what it was just a few minutes ago.
The temperatures in the building.
In the washroom.
Okay. And the plug-ins, so, I confirm that. I did check with David on that, because somebody asked me that question. The plug-ins, well, then he told us that there are some things that the electric was working on here and there. They turned off circuits here and there, and they can turn all those back on. They were just working on individual items, that those plugs were connected to a little circuit. But that's what I'm being told, that I did ask that question.
There was some concerns before when I was there, and I hope we can address. In the bathrooms, they were classrooms, so there is windows that crank out in the bathroom. If I'm not mistaken, so that's a real.
Are you sure that's wrong, and run that to the good indication, when you know there are many types of that? But I'm saying one of the good sites, like.
The bathroom.
No, my, no.
These are the three bathrooms that changed since I was there, version.
Have the architects come back for work, you know? Have they been back? They are coming tomorrow, I know. They've not been back since. We still owe the architects money to be. How much do we, do we still owe the architects? How much?
I'm not sure how much.
Really?
But we do owe them.
Okay.
Quite a bit.
If they don't get on the ball and get back, they should be a business school, not if they live with me. Or totally, they should be back after a project. And we made them hire them in, but I know it's still a project.
And then the thing about the new bathrooms, there's roles bathroom, teacher's bathroom, and a boys' bathroom. That was former classroom, and it was alive, turned on and off, and even those were then switched out. And see, here it is, four days, working business days, first day of school, we've got a little thing like this, which is really lit from the windows, in bathrooms.
The ability of the windows is definitely an issue, but even still, and I'm not downplaying that. I'm just trying to think of what, and I know that we've talked about 10, or blazing of some sort.
There was going to be something to, where they couldn't open that.
The ability was.
Kids still in that room, and upon that, so. See, my concern is, is this time next week, we supposed to have already had our very first day of school, and there's things like this that still haven't been done. So, you're going to wait and let us come over there and do go through their evidence?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Basically, it's not going to be ready, I can tell you.
It has to be.
When the lesson's over.
It has to be.
Now, it has to. And I do completely understand that. I think that tomorrow, with the air, getting the air, I think that would be a call that happens any tomorrow. So, the air gets turned on, and let's just, let's assume that the air gets turned on, and we deal with everything else the way it is right now. It is clean, the library's put back, the administrative area's put back, the kitchen is together. At that point, even without the use of the new classrooms or the use of the new restrooms, everything is slight. I mean, the paint's done, the ceilings are done, but everything is done to the point that it was, you know, as long as it's clean and everything, it's done to the point that it's done when the school closed last year, and it will continue to progress. And again, that work is going to be happening at nights and weekends at no cost to the board. And I'm not, sorry.
We can't afford to ask the teachers if I'm teaching them anything to class, instead of coming and playing around?
No.
Well, that's what they can do. The teachers can move it forward to.
No, no. So, that is, and that is part of the crew that is coming Wednesday.
And we've got other custodians.
And the labor that is coming from the inmates. They are coming from tomorrow, all the way to Friday.
Will there be compensation from the ceiling after? I noticed that there's great tiles that's already got dark spots where they've gotten wet. Is that going to be an issue throughout the school as well? There's one in what is the side of the sixth grade hallway. It's already black. Anything from the ceiling that's where it's been so hot and humid?
Yeah, so.
Any word's going to cause that, just feel like it's the front of the town?
You should not have a great deal of issue with that. I'm not saying that there wouldn't be a case here and there, but all of that is insulated, and all of that, and I do understand that it's been hot. And there, I, look, I've got projects where they didn't expect to insulate the mechanical rooms, and you walk in and it's been, it just happened to, that's the nature of specific projects. But cool air rushes out through the mechanical room, and it's raining everywhere. But nothing in there was insulated. These, so, they drained the system back down. Whenever they first did the startup, it filled the whole thing with a cup of water. And then it sat in there for a little bit, and they drained it out whenever they put the new pumps in. They had to flush everything back out. So, I can't, I'm not going to sit here and say that there won't be any issue for all the compensation, but largely speaking, there should not be a great deal of issue. There may be some issues here and there, and we can look at those on a case-by-case basis, absolutely. I mean, they'll have to be remedied regardless, but throughout the entire school, I would not expect that.
I mean, it's going to look great when it all comes together, that I was, when I seen that, it was, ew.
No, I understand. Absolutely, and.
In the scheme of things, it's very small.
Looking at everybody here in the face when I walk over there.
There's a lot of small things going on.
When I walked over there today, I was like, yeah, I'm saying, I completely understand. So, but again, we've been discussing with everybody, and I've, I've discussed that clearly with David, that there's no reason for the issues with cleanliness that are over there right now. There's absolutely no reason for it, not that it's been picked up. I mean, the air conditioning side, and issues with air being on the side, there's no reason for it. Everything that is in schools is not going to be picked up and moved out and everything. Absolutely.
Has there already been inspections on the building, like this is, or like electrical is ready and it's?
So, the electrical, the only, they had had their inspection last night, and they were waiting on, thinking that all their rough ends, and they filed out that some things have come along, or they've gotten partial files and stuff. But they were waiting on their file because of these pumps that they had to wire in.
So, somebody will go through the room and make sure each plug is working, and why switches?
You bring that up, no, let me get clear. You bring up the issue with the three lights, three rooms, the previous classrooms that have turned into restrooms in amendment, and the issue with those lights, that will have to be looked at as far as plans and how it was notated to be wired up and what the switching was done on that. I'd have to dig into the plans and see if they, how, it would have been a mess if it was not shown to be changed.
Well, as another example, there is a pole about that tall in between the new addition to the cafeteria and the hall. And it's pumped, and it's just saved. There's a lot of, like I said, there's a lot of little things that they added to the wall.
I completely understand, and I agree, and that's why, again, I think as long as we, I can reassure you that as long as the air is on tomorrow, we can, there should not be any issue to get the school back in at least operating conditions that it was in at the end of school last year. And I know there's no floors in there, and I know that everybody was looking forward to having the floors and having the entire thing put back together, and I'm here today, and it makes me miserably sick to have to stand up here and say that it's not, and I know that it hardens everybody, you all, teachers, the students, BODL, I completely understand. But I do know, it is with, it is, I mean, I feel like it's definitely the reason I had everything back to operating facilities it was at the end of the school year, and then it can improve difficult.
So, let's just say the floors don't get pretty, and that you're hoping you can get pretty on Wednesday, but they.
The library, yes.
Will the flooring, is that going to be cut off until, say, fall break?
So, the library is a little bit more difficult to navigate, because I definitely want to make sure the library's put back together. And we have a couple of other options back and forth with this flooring. So, one of them, and I'll just tell you what they are. So, the LVT flooring, I don't foresee not going yet. There's really no way that I don't foresee it going, not going yet. The reason for that is, again, this is something that is going to be rolled up into the engineer's cost of the pump issue. There's two different warranties that we're talking about on flooring. There's a manufacturer warranty and a material workmanship warranty. Material workmanship warranty is a one-year warranty, past the completion date. Manufacturer warranty is how long that manufacturer does it makes that work. So, we were actually discussing having them install the floor over the weekend. This warranty argument came up from the contractor on behalf of the contractor team. Yeah, I'm concerned about my material workmanship warranty because the air condition is not on. LVT, again, is not near as expensive as VCT or anything else. LVT can pretty well, as long as the humidity conditions, really the biggest issue is humidity conditions and temperature with the glue and not the LVT product. But in further discussions with him, basically what we then had is that they are going to install that floor, whether they, you know, they're the only issue. We didn't come to a resolution soon enough to have people here Tuesday, because they'd already lined up their labor. But they will have people here Wednesday. The one-year warranty is going to be covered by either the contractor or by the engineer. He's going to pay the contractor to have that extended warranty on that particular floor in that particular location. So, either the engineer's going to pay for the, it's round number, $24,000. The contractor says it's going to cost me $24,000 to replace that whole floor and tear it out if something goes wrong. So, the engineer's either going to pay $24,000 to the contractor to stand by one-year warranty on that floor, or the contractor should have a warranty on the floor.
Now, is that the same, is that the same type of form that's already in the administrative area?
That is.
That looks great.
Yes, it is the same form.
And the tree was put up at one point Thursday evening, so it's Saturday. And that was really, so if we just hang around.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, moving down, we've got 3B substitute report, the person who reported catch. You'll go to 3C, that would be Rhonda Thompson. Data security update for 702 KAR1-170.
Good evening. So, every year during this time, I always have to give you all a security and privacy annual update. So, that's what I'm going to do. I'll be really quick, this year, I promise. Go ahead. So, as Debbie said, there is a KRA about this. It was authorized by House Bill 5232. It established base practice guide for school district personnel information, regional security. And it requires that, I acknowledge to the local board prior to the 31st of August of each year, that we review it and we're equally happy about it. So, during this time, I'm just going to tell you what we're doing to meet this requirement and what we're going to continue to do. So, for us, and for most people, the main causes of data breaches are human error. And so, it's accidental sharing, weaker stolen passwords, lost or theft of a device, phishing and clickbait, unauthorized access to PII, which is that personal information in paper form. And then you have things like application vulnerabilities, hackers and malware. For us right now, in the last patch of year, it's been the phishing and the clickbait, where teachers and Ms. Smith and myself, all of us are receiving emails that look legit, and we click on them, and then it says, "Hey, I need your Google password." And teachers are putting their Google password in, and then their account is compromised. And so, we've had, gosh, I can tell you on the instances last year of that, and it's getting more and more popular all the time. And they do target districts. I get emails that say, Renee Smith Superintendent, West Bishop DPP. So, they know who we are because our information's out there, and so they can look really, really legit. Go ahead. So, these are the best practices for cybersecurity, is to have strong passwords, two-factor authentication, regular software updates, and employee training. And for us specifically, these are the things that we're doing. So, we do have antivirus on all of our Windows devices. We require a 15-character password or passphrase with multi-factor authentication. And so, in the past, that's only meant for staff. But KDE has implemented a new program called Rapid Identity, and they are actually requiring multi-factor for kids. However, instead of them getting a text message like you do on your phone, they're going to get a little pictograph that pops up. So, when they log into their account the first time, it's going to say, pick a picture that you want to use. And so, every time they log in from there on out, they pick that same picture, and that's their, that's their two-factor authentication. We actually work with Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, or CISA, and they do vulnerability scans on our network all the time to see if we've got any holes in our network that hackers could hack into and start getting some of our data. Again, we do the two-factor authentication. We do email scanning on the Google site, so sometimes Google will pick up stuff and say, "Hey, this looks like it's a phishing scheme," and it'll kind of, it'll quarantine it until we get a chance to look at it. We also have a banner that runs across email that is from outside the district, so it says, "Hey, just be aware, this is, this is an external email. Are you sure you want to open it?" We also have the ability to remove phishing attacks from all users' inbox. So, when we do see one, like somebody calls and says, "Hey, I think I goofed, I opened this and I put my password in." We go back in on the Google site, and we can see everybody that that's been sent to, and we can pull it out of their inbox before we have more people make that mistake. Of course, we do the regular software updates, and then the newest thing is just educating our staff. And so, I send out emails all the time reminding them, "Don't do this, don't do this, don't do this." Of course, you still have, because like I said, they're getting better and better on how they look. We even had some, thought it was so legit that they got their two-factor authentication, they said, "Is this you?" And they said, "Yes," which is another step further into that really let the hackers know what their stuff is. And of course, we have procedures or protocols at that point to say, okay, this is what we need to do. First, we got to change our passwords, and we got to start monitoring that account for a time to make sure it's not out there. We do have access to free training called security awareness training. So, this year, as next teachers start goofing, you know, second time, you're going to be doing some training online in order to keep your account, because, you know, we've got to keep our network secure and all of our, we have a lot of data in our district, so we've got to make sure we keep it safe and secure.
Do you all have any questions about this or anything else technology related? Thank you all. Thank you. Number four, approval of bills and claims under the motion. Motion. In the second.
Second.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Katie?
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Number five, approval of minutes from the July 21st, 2025 regular board meeting, and minutes from the August 1st, 2025 special. and minutes from the August first, twenty-twenty-five special call meeting. I need a motion. Need a second.
Say.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes, on the record, no one especially did that.
And yes, for me. Number six, approval of the Jackson County Middle School subcontract change orders pending K D E approval. I need a motion.
Will be approved.
Need a second.
Say.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Approval to update the new tax rate.
We are, you all saw the sheet to where I think we have agreed keeping it the same versus typing the compensating or the four percent. We agreed that we can now do it.
So keeping it the same as last year. Okay, I need a motion to keep it the same.
Motion.
Okay. Eddie?
Yes.
Second. Ronnie? Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene? Yes, for me. Number eight, approval of the Kentucky Department of Education, School, and Community Nutrition Permanent Agreement. I need a motion.
Will be approved.
Need a second.
Say.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie? Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Approval to pay K A S S membership. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second.
Say.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie? Yes, for me. Approval of a district social worker for Jackson County. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second.
Say.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Approval of contract with Strong Vision Services LLC to provide visually impaired services. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second.
Say.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Number twelve, approval of agreement for data sharing with the cadence learning online. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Say.
Eddie? Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene? Yes, for me. Approval of the agreement between the Department of Education, Medicaid, and the Jackson County Board of Education. I need a motion.
Will be approved.
Need a second.
Say.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie? Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Number fourteen, approval of contract for athletic trainer services. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second.
Say.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Number fifteen, approval to add five extended dates for the R T A coordinator. I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second. Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie? Eddie? Yes, for me. And number sixteen.
Yes.
So.
Do you want to step in as a first?
I would, I'd say I'd get up the hall if I could. Oh, okay. Approval of Fall League Elementary Basketball, but I believe that we've got.
So we have our three coaches here that will come forward, and they can ask questions if so, but you can tell them that this Fall League, what it is and what your questions are.
All right, I guess I'm talking, but it's just the Fall League will not replace the typical league we do that the district kind of funds, right? This would be, in addition to that, just a league that'll be on Saturdays starting, starting September, split its five Saturdays. It'd be K through two is going to have like, it'll be more just like training, working on, you know, fundamental skills. And then grades three through five, that'll be the working on the fundamental skills and playing games as well. And it is going to be at a cost of fifty dollars a person that would go to run by a. Shirt or jersey one on the side, and then what we do make off the fundraiser, just gather our team for travel and different expenses. We think it'd be a great additional opportunity for athletes.
Get a lot of talk.
So.
You've got to be loud, or he's going to be in contact.
I'm working on it, but so this league, I think it's good that, because we just, to be upfront and honest, our kid at high school, like, they're, we played some of the game. We're not nothing if we're behind, so we thank you for coming to the program. It's not just about the kids, or it does at high school, we want to help the kids that go all the way down, all the schools, you know, the system. Because at the end of the day, those kids, who's this big, right now, they're going to end up for us at high school someday. If we don't start helping them right now, then we'll be in the same position that we are. This is just something else, try to help our team all the way down, you know, we want to help the boys, the sisters, the sisters. We've already done it for the members of businesses of kids that aren't even that, you know, because they don't have time of left, you know, aren't able to.
You don't matter in real place, or how your kids will do, it just have to be.
They're ordinary.
Take them all, take them all.
So this is just, this is pretty much starting a foundation, working with the foundation and all the other. Good idea.
Work over to, work over to the bottom.
I think, we just, like he, to piggyback what he said, we just work on from the bottom up. Because, like he said, them kids don't see us later, and then, why not us go down there and help them? They get to see the high schools, and they get to see their future come, and help them, and then, then as they grow up, they have some help. Because the kids we have right now, they are, but in the summer, they did catch up a lot, they did grow a lot. Like, we had a lot of kids, from the stuff we done did, from the middle school to the high school, with all of them, we can see a lot of improvement. So we want to keep going down the total path. See a lot of improvement from everywhere, not just the ones we see every day, because they go, they graduate, and we got to see the ones that's coming up too.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, guys.
So.
I'll make a motion.
You've got a motion, a second. Okay, Eddie? Ronnie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Absolutely.
Yes, for me. Okay, number seventeen, I'm going to read this, I think we've got another person that's going to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, and that's something that, that was my fault. I was secretary on that.
You can make motion and amend that, which we agree with, but I think it's been tracked and cross-country, my understanding.
I'm sorry, that was my mistake.
I'm going to amend number seventeen.
Yes, to be.
To say.
Creating elementary and cross-country.
Track and cross-country team.
Yes, you need to make a motion amended first, and then discuss.
Okay. Any?
Eddie, Ronnie, motion for amend.
I am.
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. So now, we're going to say approval of creating an elementary track and cross-country team, and we've got a gentleman, elementary. We've got a gentleman called Dr. Spick.
Yes, Mr. Joshua.
Yes.
I don't like it, surrounding counties like cross-country teams, it's already like popping out and becoming popular, especially in elementary, yeah, I don't like being. There's a high school here, and I think he goes all the way down to like middle school ages. So I thought it was a good opportunity for our school system to do a cross-country team, judging off what other counties do. I guess my thoughts, proposal is to, we're letting Jackson County Elementary School versus three individual schools that would potentially have, you know, like five kids or something, if it were, you know, like championships and that. And that's similar to what the districts have done as well, considering counties. Questions? Typically, it's in, cross-country is in the fall, so they, well, waiting mayons run about six, eight weeks. Can each year, so five, six, maybe four weeks, part of that. And potentially, that would cover during the summer, so a school conference session, potentially try to, I don't know, elaborate or recruit whatnot for kids to join the team and play, play at the school here, you know, and place one of those, I think, next year.
So basically, it'd be, I'll be in the interest of the one plan.
Correct, correct. It'd be like a Jackson County, so they just get a Jackson County Elementary Cross-Country Team, it's all kids that are on the table. Three boys and girls, mom.
One time, when I did teach, you got the bullhorn or something, I was speaking to someone.
Well, we have my preference. It's okay.
It's good, it's good.
I knew that would die if I'd have said.
So this year, starting, is it's going to be a volunteer thing, or we need, what's your, like, for starting it up?
So I'm, I'm okay with the volunteer, I just, you know, volunteering has some.
And next year, we'll.
Okay.
All right, and then next year, we need to go where we need to go, again, this year, I completely agree with the volunteer.
I, I think within Ms. Smith, my register yard, if it's a school-sponsored team, those background checks, state law requires, and we have to have a team created before Ms. Smith can log them in as volunteers and go through the process that we're legally required to do to allow them to have contact with our students through the school.
And pop out this time, we already had all that, but we will.
Yeah, I've had, I've had a background check each, each, each school, each year.
We'll.
With the different sports things I do, I have three or four years, so, but yeah, so I've had, so I can do that again, to make sure it's good for this school year. I won't have any contact for students through the platform, because they're all.
So does anybody have any more questions? I need a motion.
Motion.
Say.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ronnie? Yes, for me. Number eighteen, approval to establish and reestablish positions. I need a motion. Need a second.
Say.
Eddie?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Approval of field trips, I need a motion.
Motion.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Number, yes, for me. Number twenty, approval of fundraisers, I need a motion.
Motion.
Need a second. Rhonda?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. A approval to enter into executive session as permitted by K R S sixty-one point eight one zero. I need a motion.
Motion.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Number twenty.
Wait until no action was taken in the second session. Now, didn't you say that after you made the vote?
No action was taken in the second session. And number twenty-three, approval to allow the Shepherd's Cradle to present tonight.
Thank you all for letting us come and tell you about this program. And I'll tell you right now, it will cost the district no money, and it will be a good thing for our kids. The founder, the local chapter founder of Trail Life is John Knapp, and his wife actually is over at the Shepherd's Cradle, and she's created that program. But they're a family that lives up Sanlik, and they've adopted several children. It's, it's a very big family, good family, and they want to give back. And John also is, he works at the, he's an Army veteran, and he works at the Army Corps. Mike Mullins is the chaplain for Trail Life, and he is more equipped to tell you about the programs than I am, but so that's why I had him here, so Mike, if you would just present the programs.
Good evening. With the Shepherd's Cradle, Keisha wanted to be here tonight, she's the one that's over, because she wasn't able, but I did bring a letter from her that I would like to read to you guys, if that's okay? Says, it is our privilege to present this proposal for your consideration. The Shepherd's Cradle was created out of love for our community and for observation of its great need for support. The poverty rate for Jackson County stands at twenty-three point zero two percent, and the average per capita income is only thirty-seven thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars. Our ministry is well aware of those numbers and how they impact the poverty, or how that impact poverty on our community. We recognize that new and expected mothers need support. Families need not only to survive, but to thrive. Our mission is to stand in the gap of the need and provide them with supplies, support, and guide them toward other available services within the community that will facilitate a better start for them as new parents. With the ability to reach out via the school system, we will be able to work collaboratively to meet the needs of more parents. We are asking to be allowed to hang our flyers in the schools, give our information to each family resource office, offer our ministry stocks baby supplies that we freely offer to new and expected moms in our community. We offer support, not only with supplies, but with interpersonal encouragement as well. This entails small group membership, parent, parental education, and in the future, a partnership with health departments to meet the further needs. We are a pro-life ministry, not just a pro-birth ministry. And while our ministry is part of our church and born out of faith, we do not require anybody to be a part of any religion or faith to receive our services. So we appreciate your time and consideration for our ministry and its mission, so thank you.
Mike, is there, it just required cash purposes, this is for mothers for up to six months?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you said that or not.
I, I know, I think it was in the letter, no. Yes, for mothers up to six months. We have information, we do have a Facebook page that they can go on and just send us the information, or they can contact us directly, and we'd be more than happy to help with any of our services.
Is this something similar to like the hands program that's in the, through the health department? Were they, the hands program in the health department? Similar, is it something similar?
I've heard of a hands program, I'm not that familiar with it. So I don't know what I can answer.
You made your presentation, what do you all want from us?
Access. We, we want access.
I'm sorry.
Access, we want, we want to be able to go into the elementary schools and help expected mothers, mothers with new babies, to get a good start. A lot of, you know, you'll have a mother with a child in preschool or kindergarten, and she may be expecting with another child or have an infant that she's also carrying. The, Keisha, Knapp could come in and provide services. Very quickly, what could she do with literature, what else? We have literature, we offer like mentorship, like Moms with Moms and parental classes, stuff like that. So like Keith was saying, ultimately, all we're needing is exposure, we just want to get it out there that this is available to the community. And using the student, the resource centers in each school, that way, those people can identify families and just get them in contact with us. That's all we're looking for on either program, is just for the exposure to let the community know that we are available to help.
Guys, from a legal perspective, I'll tell you, because this is a little different than what I thought, hundred percent, I'll be honest.
You have another program that you're talking about?
Kind of alternative.
He is.
Well, I'll have that next.
Okay, so that's next. On this specific side, I'll need to check with the U Service, U Service Centers are funded through federal grants, but I believe we're allowed to provide information of other available resources in the community, and I don't think we even need to vote, I think we just get a name and contact. I believe, and I'll verify this, and I'll get one of your all's number and get up with y'all within a week. But I believe U Service Centers can keep names and numbers of all available resources in the community and get them out when asked about them. As far as, like, giving U contact and information to those individuals, I don't think the district can do that, but I certainly, I'll, I'll verify U Service Center under the federal rules that they have to follow for the grant. But I certainly, I'll, I'll verify U service center under the federal rules that they have to follow with a grant.
Like on opening day or, or sometime, um, I know that they have like preschool, um, remember who the testing is preschool. It, it could be opened up and maybe Keisha set a table up with the pamphlets and brochures and, um, they were give those out. Uh, again, the only thing that they're asking for, not no money, dollars, nobody paid for anything, but it's exposure and access to parents.
Wait, I think what they, uh, U, U school, they have mothers.
Correct. What's that?
You just want to help the mothers, that right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The old mothers and the children in school, right?
And it's completely free. There's no.
The screen. The screen ends have already.
Yeah, that would be, I think certainly there's ways to do that. Just let it be a hard setup, booths and tables, just gotta make it open in groups that want to.
We know that you can't prefer without this handbook and all that kind of stuff. But, um, but it just exposure and access. I mean, that's all, that's all I think that I would like for you to go in and, and tell them about the Trail Life. That's, that's why I think he and I are more familiar with the Shepherd's Cradle. So as he had mentioned, my name is Michael Mullins. I am the chaplain of our local Trail Life troop zero eight two, or KY zero eight two eight. Uh, it is a, um, it's a program very similar to Boy Scouts. Uh, we use, uh, the motto adventure, character and leadership. Now, this is a Christ-centered, boy-focused, outdoor program, adventure program. Uh, it was founded in two thousand thirteen and now there are over fifty thousand members nationwide. Our mission is to guide generations of young men to honor God, lead with integrity, and serve others and experience outdoor adventure. Now, we have, uh, the challenges that the, that boys face today is a lot of screen time, not enough outdoor time, declining leadership opportunities and a need for strong role models. At Trail Life, we provide a safe, structured outdoor program. Uh, we provide mentorship that is vetted. Each leader is vetted. We go through background checks, uh, we go, uh, through training programs to make sure that every leader is prepared for the situation and how to work with the, uh, the youth there. And we also provide service opportunities in the community, so we're giving back to the community. So we, uh, work through four different pillars. We have, uh, adventure, which is like our high camp, camping, survival skills, STEM projects. Uh, we work on the, uh, boys and young men's character. We teach them respect, responsibility and integrity. Uh, leadership, we give them opportunity to lead their peers. It's not just something that they come to and just go home from. This is something that they grow in, they become leaders and learn to, uh, be leaders to other young men. And then also we offer community service projects, veteran support and local outreach. Trail Life complements education through our STEM activities, our engineering and our nature studies and the studies like that. Physical fitness, we have our hiking and outdoor skills that we go through. And of course, our civic and citizenship. Uh, we have a flag ceremony, it's service to the community. We make sure that the kids understand that it's important to be a part of our community and be a positive part of the community. As I said earlier, all of our leaders have background checks, they're trained. Uh, that is through like the highest level of Trail Life you have to go through. And they vet everything to make sure that everything is taken care of. So if you can't pass their vetting, then you don't get through. And if, uh, you don't get through, you're not part of the program. That's just the way they, they see that. Uh, we do have commitment to youth protection and safe outdoor practices. We have, uh, always the, the two rule. We never have one adult with one kid. It's always two adults to at least one kid. So there's always, uh, just protection for both the adult and the children. And we partner with local, with parents and local communities. So we, we try to get the parents involved as much as possible. Matter of fact, the program itself is fitted for a father-son dynamic, to build the relationships between fathers and sons. And of course, if there's not a father in that, uh, role that's available, they, the child will not be turned away. We would still build with that child, but the dynamic is built for father-son relationship. So we, we volunteer in different things. We have food drives, uh, we work with veterans events and to give support to them, we clean up parks. Uh, we do a lot to build civic responsibility and community pride. I think a lot of times, uh, our kids growing up, we don't have pride in our community anymore. And we try to build that into them. Again, the school's benefit because there's after-school enrichment, there is the availability for that. Leadership development, positive peer groups. Uh, all we're asking again is just exposure, just the ability to have the information available. And if the parents would like to be a part of this, they contact us, we contact nobody. That's all we're looking for. And if there's any kind of school projects, school service projects that maybe we could be involved in, maybe some information in that. That way we can come and partner with the schools as well and help with that. So that's all I, you guys have any questions for me or?
What does it cost to be in this program?
Uh, I don't have that. Um, I'm, like I said, I'm just a chaplain normally. Uh, John would have been here, our trail master, troop master. Uh, he has all that. It's not much, it's like.
It's like forty dollars?
Yeah, the initial is like forty dollars. We do have scholarships available if the students cannot, um, afford that. Uh, uniforms as well, you know, fifteen, twenty bucks. But again, if, if, if a child wants to be a part of it, we make sure that they're a part of it. It's not to what we turn them away.
What age group are you?
Uh, we do age five to seventeen.
I think this, and I'll probably tell my thoughts on this. I, I think I need to get with them to get some information. Generally speaking, if we partner in any way to involve students, we have something called memorandum of understanding, memorandum of agreement, so it's cleared out. There's a lot of legal implications into when you're recruiting a student into an organization through the schools. And I need to verify, I can appreciate you all of your background check. Kentucky through the schools, there's something called CAN background checks, where we're required to get of all volunteers. Um, there's also the new elephant in the room of the traceable communication system. And would this subject your group to having to communicate through with, if you came to the school in some way? I, I think there's a lot of things I probably need to sit down and go over with you guys a little bit about this. I, I think, I'll be frank, I think the Shepherd's Cradle is a lot cleaner than what we would need to put together on the Trail Life.
I don't mean to speak for John Knapp, but I'm sure he would be very willing to accommodate the, the parameters that you have.
Yeah.
In order to access more kids and, and, and help them so.
Well, that, and we, there's, there's things that'll affect your organization too, so I think you all are ready to discuss. Do, do we want to take on that extra stuff?
We're prepared for it, so, so would he, he would meet with you, would he schedule that through?
We probably need Miss Smith, meet with him and then create some more information and more when we have.
Okay.
Cause generally speaking, we do like a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding, which is just kind of a document that sells out what we're gonna do, what you're gonna do. And then it's clear to everybody what the, it's just different. When you're talking about providing information to parents, it's different than when you're talking about getting students into a group.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's just a very different process. And I, I think, I think without the more vote, we can have you information on the Shepherd's Cradle this week. I just need to verify U service center and I'm, I'm fairly certain they're allowed to provide the name of any resource in the community that they're made aware of.
And, and once that is, is okay, um, could a phone call or a contact memo be sent to the principals so they were ready to dive?
Oh, yeah, I, I think U service coordinator generally communicate with the principals on all the resources available anyway. But I, I think it's more than five, you tell the principal, hey, we're here.
Yeah.
If somebody needs us, we're willing to help.
Yeah, I would hope her going cold and, and not knowing what she's about and all that stuff.
Well, I mean, some of the stuff you were talking about, I might just speak to her too. We do this, what to set up for next year, like preschool stuff's already happened, but I know there's opportunities. You know, frankly, there's one tomorrow night and if we know what to get with it before we should break that set up tomorrow night. Cause I think there's gonna be a lot of community groups handing out stuff at the high school tomorrow. So, I mean, I, I think it's just little organization of planning. That part can be, that part's easy. That, that, that's a lot less complicated than stuff with students.
Is there anything else? Well, thank you and, and you speaking, I'll be, I'll be at John's part. We, uh, we'll be glad we can deal with you guys.
I'll give the users, we can go get your number so we can get together.
So for now?
I would say table it for the moment, cause the Shepherd's Cradle, we should be able to handle without a vote. We just need to make sure, and I'm very certain Miss Smith right knows U service rules a little better than I do. But they can provide the names of resources in your community when the people indeed come in seeking help or information. That's, that's really the whole point of sort of U service centers. And as far as like making it available to set up at events, you know, we make those things, opportunities available to a lot of groups already. So it's not a big issue to allow another group. We just need to get the connections made of who needs to contact who so that they can come set up when those opportunities are there. So I, I think that part's easy. The trail stuff, I'm gonna have to talk to them some about some of the implications both ways and see if we can figure something out that works for everybody. And if we can, we'll bring that back to you all in MOA or MOU that'll be on the board agenda in a month or two for you all to review and vote on.
I need a motion to table. Make a motion.
Say.
So, um, Rhonda?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Yes for me. Number twenty-four, we have public comment and I believe we have someone to sign in.
Ms. Ashley Foster. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to address some communication issues I have experienced regarding the development of a wrestling program, specifically interactions with the athletic director. While I did receive an email response from Mr. Stewart, I had requested personal conversation to discuss concerns and ensure that we could avoid repeating past issues. Mr. Stewart's email noted that last year there were two meetings about potentially starting a wrestling program, which resulted in no or low attendance. That is accurate. However, what was not mentioned in those, in that communication was that those meetings were extremely poorly arranged. They lacked clear communication with the public and were scheduled on short notice. And one conflicted with a major sporting event. As a result, attendance was understandably low. And there were no follow-up communication, no updates, cancellation notices or rescheduling notifications sent to the community via the Facebook page or any global call, any type of communication. Following those meetings, um, specifically the last meeting that was in regards to the sporting conflict of, uh, boys' district baseball, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Wes Bishop apologizing for the situation. And there was some discussion of plans of how to get the concept of a program back on track. That's what had led me to Mr. Stewart. Um, I had called, uh, multiple times and was unable to reach him. Um, I did receive a text message at that time. I did request a phone call during normal business hours type of thing. Um, had I received a phone call communication, I probably wouldn't be standing here today because I felt that I could have verbally, uh, addressed these concerns and we could have came to some kind of agreement. Um, some kind of plan, some kind of communication would have been had. But instead, um, I did receive an email that was after emailing Superintendent Miss Smith on April eighteen. I did note in that email that, um, possibly a gentle reminder to staff to respond to messages in a timely manner to ensure families and parents receive important information and prevent minor concerns from developing into larger issues. Um, going forward, Mr. Bishop, I did speak with Mr. Bishop on multiple occasions about this. He did, um, express that there was an interest in the program based on the survey of the students. However, due to the previous lack of communication and poor planning, it undermines the efforts to successfully launch a new program. At this point, I'm asking that some enthusiasm and intentional effort be applied to communication and planning for future meetings regarding a potentially, a potential wrestling program. Clear and timely communication is, is essential to ensure these meetings are successful and that families and students feel included and informed. I'd like to close on the communication matter and transition to the purpose of the wrestling program itself. It is important to note that while a wrestling program is intended, its primary purpose would be intended to enhance, not compete with existing athletics. It would build on athletic abilities that benefit students across other sports, football, baseball and basketball. Uh, this would be extended to women's sports, um, in any cardio, basketball, track, cross-country, any type of sport. Wrestling is an opportunity for students, for athletes to develop skills, discipline and confidence in ways that support their broader athletic experience. I do have an additional, um, portion here that covers some wrestling specifics. One thing I want to also mention, a little, uh, side note is that wrestling is the, um, fastest running women's sport in the state of Kentucky currently. Um, and there are nationally, it is a, um, very rapidly growing women's sport across the United States. There are colleges locally, um, nearby that, um, offer women's programs. Um, it would be important to note that these colleges do offer scholarship opportunities for athletes as well, um, which I think is really beneficial to the community. Continuing on, youth wrestling is often described as one of the most complete developmental sports for young athletes. It pushes kids physically, but also develops discipline, resilience and respect in ways that extend beyond the mat. Here I have a breakdown of the benefits of youth wrestling across health, emotional and social aspects. As far as for health benefits, obviously we have the full body strength and conditioning, um, cardiovascular fitness, weight management and healthy habits, injury prevention. Um, just so we're clear, uh, wrestling is not WWE. There is no, um, top of the ring, um, slams or anything like that. It is one of the safest sports when you consider injuries in the broader aspect of things. It is a safer sport with low injuries. Emotional benefits, discipline, self-control, wrestling demands focus and training, managing nerves before and staying composed, um, under pressure. Resilience and perseverance, self-confidence, stress relief and mental toughness. Social, um, benefits, respect for others. This is a huge one that's really important to me. Wrestling tradition emphasizes sportsmanship, shaking hands before and after every match, respecting coaches, opponents and referees. Team belonging, while it is an individual sport, one-on-one matches, athletes, um, train in teams, support each other, collaborate, collaborate collectively and achieve. Diversity and inclusive, inclusive, sorry. Um, wrestling welcomes athletes of all shapes and sizes and backgrounds and fosters mutual respect and appreciation of differences. This one is also huge. Wrestling is an opportunity for students that don't have a sport or an activity to be involved in something. Not only be involved, but be good at something. That's really huge because some of these students, I do feel like some kids fall through the cracks. They don't make a baseball team, they don't make a football team, they don't wanna try out for such and such. This is a really big opportunity to hit the children that are, um, on the immune systems and might not have another opportunity to do an activity. Um, leadership and mentorship. Um, we are a part of a club, uh, in Madison County and my son is a leader amongst that club. I see that leadership ability. Um, I believe it would be something that would be passed along to other students and athletes had there been a program developed. Lifelong impact, we see this at a lot of different levels because our coaches were previous athletes. Um, it is, it's very much a community. Um, they set goals, people are accountable, um, physical conditioning, all of those types of things. Uh, it brings people together. It really brings people together in a really neat way. There was one other thing I wanted to mention, but I lost it. Um, I appreciate you guys listening to me in regards to that. I did want to bring my student up, um, my vocal student that is willing to speak, um, for a brief, short couple of words if you don't mind.
Uh, great. Are we talking about, we need that survey, when, how was that, high school and middle school, or what was the?
Wes Bishop stated that he did survey high schoolers. Um, I'm not certain. Uh, there's not clarity of middle schoolers who are surveyed or not. Um, I know that we had discussed potentially survey, um, like incoming. It would be freshmen, so it might be years of graders. Um, the results of that, uh, it wasn't given to me directly as like a number or count, but he said there was enough to proceed forward with meetings. The difficulty that we're having now is that the parent meetings, um, are just not being communicated well enough and soon enough to the public in order to get feelings in. Um, the posts are giving some comments, but unfortunately, the last one, the people that scheduled the meeting didn't even show up. Everybody, when they said the whole county went to the baseball tournament, I really believe that the whole county went to the baseball tournament, because there was nobody left here. Um, one person did show up, and she actually said, well, I know Wes Bishop, so I'll relay a message. And, um, Wes Bishop followed up with me on that day following up.
Is this something, I have no idea about her number. Is this something that they can, you can start as a freshman or in high school and, and be able to participate and do well at, or is it something that you need to start younger or?
That's a great question. Um, wrestling is, since it would be new to this area, we do see that it's primarily a high school sport. There are junior high teams. It is something that, um, I see that there's little like pop-up locations of wrestling. There's like an area in, around these counties that have it, and then there's Lexington, Richmond, and then there's a couple of counties to the last. Um, so it is kind of spotty right now, but the growth and development and the trajectory of it, my recommendation has always been to Wes Bishop, start now and build because it is going to surround us very quickly. Um, other schools are going to get programs. Um, reason being, wrestling is a low-cost sport. When you think about, um, equipment, you have to have a mat. There's not a lot of equipment. You're going to have like the facilities, like the weight room. That's going to be a multi-purpose. The expenses are already being paid for that. Um, and that's even if they use it. Children can honestly, at, on under-high school level, they can use their body weight for that type of workout, very much so. So it's not even required. Um, when you think about the equipment needed to, um, like dress a child, yes, you have a uniform, um, fee, there's headgear, and, um, there's footwear. Um, those are pretty reasonably priced when you consider how much are baseball cleats and how much are football cleats and helmets. It is one of the lower-cost sports. That is a major advantage, especially in this area, that, you know, parents aren't going to want to shell out two hundred and fifty dollars for their kids to play sports. Um, it can be done far less than that. Um, the big cost initially would be a mat, and even when you look at the prices of those in consideration of like a football field and a baseball field, very, very low cost, very low cost. Um, I really, and I don't know how the board would feel about this, but I really believe that wrestling could be done on a volunteer basis. I don't know. Everybody would be interested in doing it by a volunteer basis, but everybody that we know in other states pretty much does this on a volunteer basis. Um, they love the sport. They want to be involved. Um, they pass all background checks, and it is primarily coaches that are volunteers, their parents that want to be involved, um, previous wrestlers that want to give back. That is what I see about ninety percent of the time.
Do you have some answers, please?
Wrestling could be a very good sport for people that aren't good at baseball and basketball and that. It's not something that you need to have everything spectacular, but all you need is shoes, headgear, and... And I think that wrestling would be very good for a lot of the kids because it's fun and lots of kids love it.
What grade are you in?
I'm in the sixth.
How many degrees?
I think five years.
Seven.
Seven.
One thing you said today, high school teams encompass seventh grade and up.
Oh, okay.
It's really, it's really high in wrestling. I mean, a couple of my districts have wrestling. Pretty much the high school team takes everybody to seventh grade. I think they can't take sixth graders, but starting in seventh grade, they can be a part of the high school team for the rules.
Tom reached out to Mr. Bishop about that survey and different results, and he was crucial to it. Um, and he has now, I don't know which way he's shared it with them, and he has some things to add. And my, my baby's concerned with the coach, that they all die, which I'm sure fans might, that would be a little hard. Yep. Wouldn't they? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and the twenty-five approval to adjourn and motion?
Motion.
In a second. Monda, you have Eddie, and there's Mandy, Eugene?
Yes.
This for me.